Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this point in the meeting, we're going to start with presentations. And Chief, we'll have you on the Minister of the Open Office.
One moment.
And introduce your officers.
Mayor, Council, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight we'd like to welcome two members of the Burnsville Police Department for our ranks. We have Chris Santantinello and Christopher Luckemack. Both officers were previously employed at the Point Pleasant Bees Police Department. Chris Luckemack is a four-year veteran of the United States Marine Corps. And Christopher Santantinello is a six-year veteran of the New Jersey National Guard. They both graduated from the Ocean County Police Academy, special law enforcement officers. But I figure tonight to take you on the office for Burnsville.
Do you want to do them separately?
Do you want to... Can someone hold the Bible site? We'll look into it. We'll look together.
Well, that raise your right hand. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And the New Jersey.
And the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly.
Impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties of a police officer.
Perform all the duties of a police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will not use my office.
And I will not use my office.
To grant preferential treatment.
To grant preferential treatment.
Nor to seek personal gain.
Nor to seek personal gain.
Favor or advantage.
Favor or advantage.
Not available to the general public.
Not available to the general public.
So have only got.
So have only got.
Congratulations. Great to see you.
Great to see you, man. Thank you.
I spoke Chris.
Yes, yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. There we go.
This'll be a good one tonight.
Okay, approval of minutes, July 11. Mr. DeLeo before Terrence Schmidt for absent. July 11 minutes. Anyone have any comments or changes on them? Scene, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of July 11.
I'll move.
Moved by Mr. Schmidt. Second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wade. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The ayes have it. All right, at this point in the meeting, the Mayor and Council welcome comments from any member of the public. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit the opportunity for anyone who wishes to be heard, speakers shall limit their comments to five minutes. If reading from a prepared statement, please provide a copy and email a copy to the Clerk's office after making your comments, so it may be properly reflected in the minutes. Anybody from the public? Rob?
Discreet, Mayor and Council, nothing to report tonight, just only if anybody has any questions. Return to the House after the rest of the day.
JCPenney.
Rob was quite kind to answer a phone call for me last Friday. Was it Warren, right? Yeah, one of my family members lives in Warren and they had their power out. He has a CPAP machine, so, you know, I was... Got his power on, and I was very, very appreciative that you were able to take that call. So thank you again. Great work keeping us updated.
Thank you.
Looks like you're a parent who's been pretty busy the last couple of weeks.
It's been very busy several weeks. We've had some very intense burners from food that we did not expect to be. Had a lot of intensity, kicked out 27,000 customers, and more than 10 areas especially. So it's been a... Been an active summer, yes. Burnsville seems to have been a sparkly spirit.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you. Sorry, do you want?
My name is Malak. I just came to thank the board for your almost immediate response to the appeal that I made recently about the parking on my street. And in addition, the police chief came to see me two days later, and we had a good discussion about how to resolve the problem. And he said to me, "I'd better be here tonight." He was going to introduce an ordinance for the parking, so I'm here, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sir, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Alan Malak.
Anybody else from the public? Hey, you made it. You're rushing in.
287 is always a challenge.
Yes.
Mark Priscina, 16 Chilton Street. First off, I want to thank the Council for all your hard work and your dedication. Yeah, I know you sometimes don't believe me when I say that. But believe me, I do understand what the dedication and hard work is because I do it for a living for the past four decades. So I'm here tonight to congratulate also your efforts on the infrastructure in town. Very happy with the basketball court, really good, good asset to the town. Keep up the good work. Hopefully, we can find a resolve to the Clermont steps soon and move on from there. But with every good relationship comes a little disagreement now and then.
Yes.
And Eleanor Roosevelt once said, "You've got to agree to disagree once in a while." So as you know, I had a concern about the use of public lands for the deer management program. And I want to be absolutely clear to this council. I have nothing against wildlife management. In my career, I've had to do it three times with three different species of animals. I have nothing against hunting. It's everybody's right to do that, and as long as you have a license and you do it properly, I have no objection to that. My real concern is the use of public lands. And I honestly don't believe that the study that was put forward to you people warrant the level of response. Yes, we need a management plan, but I don't believe we had to open up all of the tracks that you're opening up. And in the future, I wish you would consider scaling it back a little bit. I think I was here a while back saying, "Listen, I don't want you to stop. I want you to tap on the brakes a little bit." I think we're going a little bit overboard. When you look at the facts, and I asked Mr. Van Cleef last, I guess Thursday night, at the library, "What's our actual population and what is the actual ratio of the deer per acreage?" He couldn't answer the question. He said, "No formal study really was done." Yet you had a multitude of hunters here who told you, "The population's down. We can't shoot any." So I'm a little concerned that I think you might have been baited if you possibly would accept that little pun on some of these facts. Yes, there's evidence that there's deforestation of the understory. I understand. I get that. I'd like to see a plan on what kind of deer exposures you're going to include, what kind of protected plantings you're going to do, instead of constantly looking at other municipalities as far as 40 miles away in Hopewell on what their situation is and not Burnsville. And that's all I'm really asking about that. One other concern I have, and I really regret that I can't come here more often, but we have our meetings on Monday nights up there, is I keep on reading about the development proposals of town. And it sounds so out of character for who we are. I've been a resident for 30 years. We picked Burnsville for a reason. I had to work two jobs to get our house. As small as the property is, it's our house. I really hope that you all consider the character of the town when you're deliberating on all these subjects. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question, sir? Because we've talked about this, as you know, Ed, the deer. Could you tell me, just for my... Almost always for my own purpose to know, what is it that you don't like about it being on public property?
I believe that public property is somewhat sacred, if you will, that you should only really be using it for the intent and purpose in which we purchased the land or in some cases, which we negotiated with a developer to get that land. Only in emergent times do you really want to open it up for different types of uses. And I really don't see this as being an emergent time. I've recognized a need for a management plan. I got that. I accept that. But I really don't believe that... We overreacted somewhat here.
So the fact that we'd have to, let's say, close it down for a few hours on a certain day in a month, is that the part that...
That's not my understanding. Well, first off, it is the actual premise of we're using it for a purpose other than what it was intended for, in my opinion. This is all my opinion, folks. I'm not, you know, I could tell you that I, you know, when I... When I indulge, I emit chimes. I don't do that. I simply am a person that have been through this experience over the past four decades in my career, had to do it with three different species of animals, and believe me, when we had to do this, it was with great consideration and great respect for the lands that we were doing it on. We certainly didn't open it up to all the properties that you're talking about. So I give kudos to the green team. They work very, very hard. I do believe it was somewhat selective in some of the information that came across. It's a healthy criticism. It's not one I'm condemning them for. But I honestly think that when you have a group of hunters native to the area, you have a petition with over 300 signatures, that we kind of went in a direction that was kind of preconceived here. And I wish you would reconsider that as we go down the line.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To respond a little bit, first and foremost, this is a one-year trial. We've got four properties that we selected. As you know, because you were at the Green Team meeting, you know, we did respond and say, you know, we could look at local people, but something needs to be coordinated.
Sure.
Nobody stepped up. The only group, you know, nobody locally wanted to say they would coordinate it. So that sort of took that option off the table.
And I'm not suggesting that the option should not be considered for the route that you're currently going. All I'm saying is, we probably shouldn't have went to all the tracks of land that you're considering, particularly the smaller ones. That's the ones I'm concerned about. It's an opinion.
Who else? No? Good. Thank you. Anybody else from the public, sir?
Hi, good evening. Matt Marino, 21B Fox Hollow Trail. I know the redevelopment is going to be discussed later, but I just wanted to urge the board to really think about... You know, I think most people agree that redevelopment of some sort is needed in Burnsville. But with all due respect to the people who present, made the presentation, you know, you want to do... You want to do it the right way, you know, for this town, for this community, for this borough. And with all due respect to people who presented it, that doesn't seem to be the right way to actually do it. So, you know, I've just encouraged the Council when deciding that to really think about, you definitely need it, and I think most people in the community would like it, but, you know, let's do it the right way. Let's make sure that, you know, we factor everything into consideration because there's a lot that they proposed that, you know, many people, they were concerned about. And again, it's not to say that we can't do something, but that project, the way it presented, doesn't seem to be right for Burnsville. And you know what? There's one that's out there that is right for Burnsville, but, you know, let's make sure that, you know, we think about that. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else from the public? I see no one else. Close the open session. All right, move on to ordinances. I want to entertain a motion to move that 161723 authorizing an appropriation of $20,000 from the capital fund balance and capital improvement fund for acquisition of a four-wheel-drive vehicle for the construction department, be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning 7:00 PM on September 12, 2016. entertain a motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Mr. Youngblood? Second? Seconded by Mr. DeLeo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The ayes have it. All right, we have resolutions. 16137 through 16156. Anyone want to poll any for questions or comments?
And there's another one on the table.
You have another on the table? Okay, 16157 for the public record. It's appointing, seeing Crump as a full-time dispatcher for the police department.
Kevin, can we pull 145?
145. Okay, anyone else?
Nope.
Jeff, Janet?
I had one, but I can't find it.
Actually, I did want for one, 16141.
141. Okay. Anything else?
No.
Maybe John should come up for...
All right, John, you want to... Address 141.
Is that why it's the sewer capital budget ahead of the other camera noise?
The water chamber replacement project? Yes, we've already awarded the contract for that. The engineering firm, our wastewater consultant advised me that we needed a TWA approval from DDP. So this is just authorized, and I'm here to sign that application.
Okay, I was just... I was trying to remember what else was in that sewer capital.
Cameras.
Cameras, I know.
Yeah. All right, 145.
John, my question was just with the... With that equipment, you know, the price of $103,000, is that something that, you know... How long are we going to... It's got a 10-year life. We're going to continue to use it, or is it a short term? Where are you going to do it?
It'll be 20, 30 years. This will help us with our goal of getting out and getting camera out into our mains and looking for infiltration and flow. It's really an indisposable tool. There are blockages every now and then. We're at the mercy of Burnsville Township or someone, a P-PAC Ladstone, to lend us a piece of equipment. It's not always available. In addition to being there for the immediate need of the blockage, our wastewater operator has expressed an interest. And there's been talk about a couple hundred thousand dollar project to get out and televise our infrastructure to find. We know we have infiltration. We know we have inflow. But to try to get the big ones, and he's willing to do that in-house, at least take a big portion of that with the purchase of this camera. We've had the money for a year or two, and we're really just getting around to taking necessary administrative steps to purchase it.
Okay. I'm sad.
You okay?
I'm good.
You guys fine?
Good.
All right, I want to entertain a motion to move that resolutions 16137 through 16157. entertain a motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Mr. Youngblood? Seconded by Mr. DeLeo. Roll call, please.
Mr. DeLeo?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wade? Yes. Mr. Youngblood?
Yes.
All right, reporting minutes will turn. Anybody have any questions? On the attorney's report? All right, scene, we'll move to council committee reports, public safety.
Do you have not had a meeting other than approving the higher decision, Chris? Chief, I assume we haven't heard anything further from the letter that you sent out last Friday about 202 and where that's going?
I do have some updates. We have three things.
Right at the stake.
I have three things. First of all, I just want to thank everybody who participated in our national night out event that we had along the second. We had probably by the end of the night, 240, 250 people attended. I think a lot of people had a good time. We had a lot of support from people in the community, Southright, Burnsville, PVA, Red Grazing Department, Joe Corrigan, the fantastic cows for us. There's so many people that pitched in and helped us on that night and showed up. The fire department was fantastic and gave us a lot of support and help. It's a great event. It was a good opportunity for the police officers to meet people in the community, people in the community to meet our new officers that were disappointed. It was the second night on the town, so they got to meet a lot of residents from town. So that's an annual event that I think is well worth the time that we've been doing it. Mayor, thank you for coming out and with us there at that pool. Secondly, the... In the open section, we talked with the high school parking problem. We do not have an ordinance to be introduced tonight because we had a public safety committee meeting prior to the meeting. But the police department has come up with a recommendation that will basically shift some of the available parking that's on the street up here away from the more congested areas up there and shift it to other areas of Olcott Avenue that are underutilized, allowing more available space for some of the high school students to park and alleviate some of the safety concerns that exist up in the area of Ivy Avenue and up towards the top of Olcott near Old Army Road. So we can discuss that further at a committee meeting. We'll give you some more details about that plan. But I think it's a reasonable plan and it could help to alleviate some of those safety concerns. And I see we have another item of business tonight related to that that we may want to discuss in committee a little further before there's any decision made under request for the high school to use the parking at the library. Because there are some other changes being made with the library parking plan as well that may impact the decision that the council makes regarding those 15 spaces.
Okay.
That are coming up. Also, the third thing that I had was an update on Route 202. We have been working very closely, myself and Tom, but now both, I've been working very closely with DOT to address safety concerns, traffic safety concerns, dealing with the amount of traffic that's been brought out to Mika Road and some of the local side streets in Burnsville. We've asked for additional signage. We've asked for a clarification of the detour route. We have received some follow-up action as a result of our efforts. More signage has been put up. We've been considering message boards put up. One of the main concerns is keeping truck traffic off of the road and off of those road traps. We have some issues here that we're still continuing to deal with. They promised additional signage, additional warning signs. That should help alleviate some of those concerns, so we're still waiting, but we'll see. I was just advised last week informally that the contractor who was doing the bridge work has been removed from job. And you're no longer on that job. There's a new contractor who has come in. I have not received any information about who that company is or any official contact information for them. However, I've heard that they anticipate this job being done probably within 10 weeks, 11 weeks, more, less than the four months. I think there's a little safety question there, but as it progresses and when it moves along, we'll have a better idea when 202 will be reopened. But right now, it's still that two- to four-month window. I doubt very much it's going to be four months. Probably be less than three. But we'll have to see how things progress with this new contractor who's taken over. Everyone's responsible. As I said, we just don't have a contact for them at this point yet, so the work is still close.
And it will be through the start school?
Well, it will be after the opening of school, but how long into that, I really can't.
It's like for Halloween, maybe?
Trick or treat.
Right.
Well, Chief, I just want to compliment you and your police department. You did a great job. You did a fantastic, you know, the basketball relay contest and everything. You used the whole facility up there on National Night Out. Prosecutor's office was there with their SWAT team vehicle, fire department, ambulance. And we just... A great night. Thank you, and the department. All right, anyone else? Comments? All right, finance, personnel? Peter's not here. Any updates?
I did not.
Nope.
We have something to place up?
Yes, okay.
Other than that, there's nothing.
All right. All right, engineering, technology, and public works?
We had no meeting this month. John, you want any update for public works? We had no meetings.
The only thing at Public Works, we talked about Mullins Lane a little bit. You just awarded the contract, so there's a little bit of work that needs to be done ahead of time. Poll relocation, tree removals. That work can begin to take place. And on Mika Road, Kevin, we invited the chief to our last meeting. We have discussed pressing DOT to provide us with a waiver and allow us to continue work on Mika Road. At both the public works staff and the chief, public works committee, felt that we really can't do that with the traffic volume that's up there. We'd be essentially shutting down the egress and exit out of that part of town. In addition to that, we got a really steep roadway. We've got a couple weeks of widening, patching, et cetera, needs to take place. Then we'll be milling and paving the roadway. We really don't need to be paving a road that's got greater than 10% grades and 90-degree weather. The added traffic on that roadway will really do a number on that road. And as we talked about it, we... The recommendations made at Public Works that, you know, we really need a 202 job to be done before we complete the work on Mika Road in the interest of longevity of our job.
In the event that the 202 project spills into November, is there a date beyond which you have to jump in? Otherwise, we're going to lose the ability to do it this year.
You prefer not to pave in November. You'd rather have temperatures, you know, I don't know, 70 degrees or so. We've paved in November. Plenty of people paved in November. I've had roads hold up fine. It's made more a function of snow and, you know, Mother Nature's going to throw at us. If they're able to shrink that timeframe down to a mid-October completion date, we should have no problem completing the project. Again, we've got about three more weeks of work that we need to do.
The contractors that were supposed to do both Post Kuhn Hart and Mika, you know, they've gone other places, or are they just sort of...
They've gone other places.
Now, that ban is still in effect, or was?
Yes.
And do we have any... I mean, until the ban is lifted by the state, we're not doing anything anyway, so... And no sense...
That's step one. But even if we do get the go-ahead from the state, it's our recommendation that we stay away from Mika. Well, Post Kuhn Hart, we can probably get him back and, you know, complete. Again, similar timeframe, we've got about two or three weeks of drainage, and then we'd be calling TILCON and under the COOP to know when to pave the roadway.
And no indication from Trenton in terms of timeframe?
I haven't even know if they're talking to each other.
On the coattails of that, as a practical matter, there is no alternative detour route that really makes any sense. It's not something that first, we're up there in town. Mika Road's the only road.
And so if for some reason we have to push that to the... I mean, it's not going to have any big deterioration over the winter?
It wouldn't be ideal, you know, that there's a reason why we're doing a lot of reconstruction work on Mika Road. It's in rough shape. Gee, I hate to think that we'd have to go through a winter on Mika the way it is. We need to bring the contractor back in and maybe we level up some areas. Have to cross that bridge.
Yeah. Too many variables we can't control at this point.
Anything else? Yes? John, anything else? That's it, okay. Any questions? All right, any other committee or commission reports?
Just one thing I'll mention. H-PAC doesn't meet during the summer. But with the project for Dunster shifting over to Friends, that committee has started to meet more frequently. And they would probably... And they would like to ask to have a liaison from the council serve on that group just to keep some better lines of communication. So, you know, something we can discuss down the road. But I told Dan, you know, since I'm on... Currently serving in H-PAC, I can do that as well, or we can open that up. So, but something we need to look on in the next month or so.
Sounds good. Anything else? Anybody else? Any other reports? All right, scene none. Item of business, item 11A, public hearing on requalification regulations to respect your business for preservation of the Dunster school property. Okay, I'm having it in our package. It's a requirement. Anybody have any comments on it?
I just need to open it to the public.
Okay, public, any comments? Scene none. I thought you were going to say something last one. Okay. All right. Skip, any comments? All right. All right, so, seen none?
It's just a public notice, though.
That's all, a public notice. All right, 11B, an ordinance given by creation director authority to regulate the use of the new basketball courts.
I recommend that we carry this till next month and discuss rewriting all the park rules and regulations. At the current time, there are hard five different rules and regulations and different chapters in the federal code, and the main rules and regulations are just the county rules and regulations that we adopted by reference, but I doubt anyone in town has ever seen the county park rules and regulations. So I would suggest that we have a short, clear set of rules and regulations that we adopted that are known as the regulations.
Who's going to put that draft together?
The whole of us, here on the chief. We've been talking about it.
Okay.
All right, sounds good to me, everybody okay with it?
Yeah, we want to get your approval.
All right, sounds good, Jack, start working. We'll be good, all right. 11C, council meeting room paint project.
I see we get bold.
All right, we.
Colors?
Yeah.
You didn't like red? I thought, I thought it was a pretty pricey quote.
I thought so, too.
Why are you repainting the room?
There was a proposal to change the colors and, basically, keep it up to grade. Basically, they had a meeting several months ago that suggested the colors below, they call it Baltic gray for the bottom section, a light pewter gray for the upper area above the chair rail. And they have links to the colors.
It seems like always the fun.
Kevin was concerned that on camera, he didn't stand out.
No. Bob, don't believe that.
Seems like, I mean, there clearly is some touch-ups that need to be done, but looks like a waste of funds.
Yeah, and the price was $3,500.
So it's still a waste?
No, I just wanted to give you the price publicly. So, council members, any comments on this? Anyone else from the public comments? Are you all happy with the room you're sitting in? All right.
I think it obviously needs to be painted, we've got spackle over here sticking out. It's about time it needs to get a coat of paint.
I was just curious as to how many quotes we had, because I thought it seemed expensive.
Let's carry this to the next meeting, see if there's any other quotes and further discussion on this.
I had one logistical question, is that when we put in the electrical on the camera, we have conduit up there which comes as like a stone color, whatever you want to call that, almond color, can that be painted, otherwise that's going to stick out against gray.
I think he said yeah.
He can paint that?
Yeah.
It's plastic, so sometimes plastic doesn't accept paint too well.
I think he looked into it.
Okay.
All right, so let's carry this to our next meeting for further discussion. But Bob, thanks, good point, thank you.
Can someone touch it up?
Hmm? Anyone else?
I don't know if you can touch it up, you kind of see it. I'm worried about $3,500 bucks.
All right, any other comments?
No.
Seen none?
No.
All right, we'll carry it to the next meeting. All right, 11D, streetlights at 19-28 Anderson Hill Road.
Is that on the corner of the scene?
We had correspondence back and forth, Rob Walton was here from JCPN L tonight, he, Kev, chief, I believe he suggested I put in a higher wattage bulb in.
This, this person here?
No.
Basically, we're talking about the area of Anderson Road near the intersection of Alcott extending out towards Wesley, and there's been some concern that it's not lit enough for pedestrians after market. The op, we have three options, we have a 50-watt bulb, 100-watt bulb, and 150-watt bulb that can be put into the existing fixers that are there. The power company was notified, they did come out, they did replace the existing bulbs on the streetlights in those area, in those areas. Mrs. Maron felt that it wasn't bright enough.
What wattage is enough?
I'm not sure what is, was put in there, I'm assuming they're 50-watt bulbs because they're not very bright. It could be 100, I'm not sure, but the additional wattage to go up would be about $9 a month is what Mr. Walton had indicated to me earlier for each light bulb that you increase the wattage. So there's an additional fee, which is why the administrator asked to have that discussed for council. They'll replace the bulbs if we continue to pay the existing rate. If you want to up the watts, just tell them to be a fee, and the administrator wanted council to determine whether or not that fee was as reasonable and if they should proceed with increasing the watts before they install any lighting in the area. I think that would be the practical way to go before they actually install all another, another light on.
My concern is, once we get into the later times, and the other option he threw out was we've got some poles that don't have lights on them. And, I mean, part of Christine's, at least the letter, and, you know, three months from now, it's going to be pretty dark by the time kids get out of school. I would have thought, looking at an additional light on one of those two poles in the documents that they mentioned didn't have lights, would actually help sort of extend that灯light period instead of going from one, you know, spotlight down to the next and you still...
You can add an additional light, from what I understand, there's no cost for light, it's just the monthly fees.
Right.
So they'll come in and install a light, but they're going to want a future request from council to do that and an agreement that will pay the additional monthly fees. I don't know, you know, what the radius of the increased lighting would be, if they just increase the existing lighting, if that would be sufficient to fill in that space in between or not. But there is, you know, probably 300 feet or so between the two lights that are there, I think, but you can certainly add another light, so it's really up to you. I think that's what the administrator was hoping you could all just say.
Do you have a recommendation?
Well, if I say, let's go with what's here, increase the wattage, we're still paying an extra $18 a month if we do it on both bulbs. I don't know if, you know, if we put another light there for free and filled in the space for the lower wattage bulb, you might be able to do the same thing for the same cost and add another light. I really don't have the details from the power company, I asked for pricing and I got a very broad response about the cost per light that's $9 a month and more for higher wattage bulbs, but he didn't tell me how much more.
So if it's 50 now and you go to 150, that might be a little obnoxious doubling the wattage like that, right? Would you just go to 100 instead of the 50?
I would think you would start with the lowest amount to see what the, you know, what have the least impact on the huge ones also, if you want to. There are other residents in the area that I don't know how they feel about having the increases.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Lighting on the street. Nobody else has indicated anything to me anywhere in the other. I did ask Mrs. Maron about that, he felt that everybody was in favor of having more lights and the houses that would complain are empty right now, so.
How are we going to do it? You didn't add more lights, you already have.
So I, you know, there's a lot of areas in town that are poorly lit, so, you know, it's really up to council. That area does get a lot of pedestrian traffic.
I was going to say, that area would be a safety word.
There are the crosswalks, there's a crosswalk at Alcott, there's the crosswalk at Wesley, there's sidewalks there, it's closed at town, so it's something, you know.
I don't want to delay the process, but is it something we should look at in Public Works and, I mean, if we...
I'd say we add one, increase the wattage on the one and see what we got.
Add one and increase one?
Increase the wattage on one, from 50 to 100.
Well, you've got two crosswalks, you're either going to increase the wattage on both, I would think, because you've got people either coming through the back end of the high school or they're going down Alcott, depending on where they're walking to. And it's harder, I understand, it's dark a lot later now, but come October, you're going to, by the time kids get out of sports, it's dark. And people are accelerating, cars are accelerating as they go through the light at Alcott, as they finally get through the light at Alcott. And I do think it's a dangerous situation, I think it, I'd like to actually see an additional light, but...
Can I say something then?
Yes, good.
Don't you think it would make sense to not just go, and I'm sure Christine has spoken many more, but wouldn't we be remiss not to go out to the families in that area where this light may be shining in their house? I know if it were me, I probably would be opposed to it. I think we need to get her to do it, not just base it on she believes everyone in that neighborhood wants it. Like, I think we have to do our due diligence and ask, like, is it, is it a true issue? And Kevin, that's where I think it's up to you to determine, not the council, is it truly a safety issue? And if you say yes, then of course they'll go with it, but I wouldn't put your hands without that information.
You know, you turn if you're going to turn if you don't, I mean, if, you know, if you go too bright, people are going to complain about that, if you go bright enough, people are going to complain about that. Me personally, I think what we should do is increase the wattage on the existing lights, see how it looks and if it's dark in between, add a third light.
There you go. Now the representation.
But that's what I would do, but it's really up to council, I think it's dark, the least amount of work, put more light in there if it's not sufficient to fill in the area of concern, we could put a third light in.
Can you complain if it's dark down?
Yeah, that's true. That was kind of my concern with, you go up, it's too bright, you go back down. That was my concern with going from 50, jumping to 150, you know, make the first step.
I would go to 150, I would go to 100.
Yeah, so why don't we do that? Why don't we propose that we do the two lights, go up the next stage to 100 watts for both?
If it's 50, if it's 50 now, sir.
Right, right, whatever the next step is, let's say.
Whatever the next step is.
And then, see what it looks like and if it's not any better or any more purposeful, then we go and add the third light.
Sound good, everybody?
Okay, I mean, we could see that if we still need that third light, if we do.
And it's going to be easier to make that determination.
Mr. Schmidt, excellent recommendation.
November.
Love it.
Just a quick, switching lights out, it doesn't take them all time to be able to build.
Anyone else from the public?
I don't understand, the downside risk is somebody gets hit by a car. That strikes me that this is no brand.
Yes, okay, all right, anyone else?
All right, so we, so we're in agreement, we're going from 50 to 100.
All right, we're in, councils in agreement to go to the next level of wattage, whether it's 50 now to 100 or whatever.
Whatever the next step might be.
And maybe we can have a gentleman from JCPN L just let us know when that's been done, then we can...
Yes, he'll coordinate with Public Works and the police department, JCPN L. All right, all right, Sam. All right, 11E, redevelopment controls, Matt Jessup? All right, Matt, wherever you want to go. Yes. Is Danny, are the speakers on or no? The microphones, people who hear are...
I'm trying.
I want to make sure everybody can hear since you're facing us.
You'll hear.
Yeah, we'll hear, yes. Everybody else on the other end, all set?
I'm not sure they're still hooked up because there were problems.
There were echo and problems, yeah.
We want to turn the switch on, but you may just have to speak up.
Okay, right, well, if anybody came here, just let me know. Good evening, mayor, members of council, Matt Jessup from McManaman, Scotland and Bowman. I'm here to provide you with an update on where the borough is in the lengthy process of, you know, potential redevelopment in the downtown. Just to sort of refresh what we've done to date, what the borough has done today, tonight is actually the eighth public meeting at which we have been discussing the potential redevelopment of the downtown. That includes two planning board meetings that I'll summarize in a moment, all in the last six months actually to the day. We started on February 8th and here we are, six months later, and eight public meetings later, discussing the potential redevelopment of the downtown, which includes the train station and the Quimby lot. So in that timeframe, here's essentially what has happened. The borough has proposed an area, as an area in need of redevelopment, that's the train station lot and the Quimby lot. The borough completed a study of that redevelopment area and sent it to the planning board. The planning board held a hearing and determined that that was an area that was in need of redevelopment, and the borough concurred with that and adopted a resolution declaring the properties as an area that is in need of redevelopment. The borough then created a redevelopment plan through the assistance of its planner, referred that plan over to the planning board. The purpose of the planning board's review is to provide, the planning board provide you, the council, with a report that identifies any provisions in the redevelopment plan that are inconsistent with your master plan and to make recommendations regarding those inconsistencies. In addition, that report can provide any other matter really that the planning board wants the council to know about. So the planning board did hold two hearings actually in order to generate that report that led to a report in the form of resolution 2016-11, which was recently amended and I think has been presented to this council in its amended form as of August 1st. So I presume you've seen it, had a moment to at least review generally the planning board report. I would, and I can answer any questions you have on the report, but I can sort of take a crack at summarizing on three levels what I, what my view of the report. I think at the highest level, some of the comments lead to a fundamental issue of whether or not redevelopment at the train station is an appropriate action. What do I mean by that? Some of the comments related to preserving the surface area parking as open space for community use. And obviously, if you're going to redevelop and put buildings on those lots, you are not going to be able to preserve those spaces, or it's just a fundamental thing that one can exist along with the other. Alcott Square is sort of the focus of the downtown and there was a comment that, in the report, that that focus may shift over to the train station. That's probably true, I would suspect that a, you know, new project built around the train station, which already is a focus, would, may end up, you know, diverting some of the attention of the downtown to that area. And there were some comments in the report about the vista, sort of what I would call anyway, the sweeping vista views of the train station. You have access from a view, you can see the train station, you know, virtually all the way across that property, up from the corner all the way down. If you do put redevelopment, if you build some projects on each side of that, you may sort of limit some of the viewing area of that, of the train station to where you are more, you know, centered to the train station to see it versus, you know, a block or two up or down the road. And those are all, those are all absolutely valid points, they are excellent points, and to me, they are just fundamental issues of, you know, you can't develop the, those parcels and, and still satisfy those things. So those are sort of some of the fundamental items that are inherent with either having redevelopment or not having redevelopment, you know, in that part. There were many suggestions that I also thought were excellent, that identified inconsistencies with the master plan, but that I think are items over time, should a project move forward, that would be flushed out through project design and through site plan with a developer once there's a developer on board. And remember that as part of this process, again, should you move forward, the borough would need to authorize and enter into a redevelopment agreement, which would really lock in the concrete terms of the project to be developed. So you have a control mechanism over the details of what ultimately gets built there. But I think, you know, sewer system impact was raised in a couple of points in the, in the planning board report. Traffic and intersect, traffic flows and intersection impacts at certain already congested, congested intersections and troubled intersections are all things that would be looked at, could be looked at and studied and designed, you know, into a plan, into a project, excuse me. Pedestrian improvements, pedestrian friendly improvements, not just bringing that back gravel area, sort of near the transfer station, getting people across there, but even into town. Those are all items that while not specifically addressed in the draft redevelopment plan, are items that I think would be, you know, critical for this board and the other, the planning board, to include in a project design when working with a, with a developer. Architecture and facade details, same thing, streetscape improvements and landscaping, all items that were commented on that were concerns of the planning board handling the public with respect to consistency with the master plan, that I think can all be addressed in, and are typically addressed in design of a project once you are working across the table from a developer. And then there were items that were inconsistent and we absolutely think should be revised and included in a plan if a plan were to go forward. In fact, one or two of them quite frankly were oversights at the drafting of the plan level that we were hoping the planning board would comment on to ease a transition and be able to revise the plan. To include, that includes affordable housing. You all know, because I've told you before and I still do have the view, that affordable housing requirements should be left to the redevelopment agreement. housing requirement should be left to the redevelopment agreement, largely because, you know, that won't be done for a while, and the, and the, um, process and the evolution of affordable housing is changing day by day. And so, I, my view is, the later you can get to the point where you demand the developer and contractor, the developer, to satisfy some sort of affordable housing, um, requirement that you established in the redevelopment agreement, the later you do it, the more likely you know what you need to get the developer to satisfy. Now, that's easy for me to say, because I don't go in front of your special master like poor Jack, and, you know, the master asks, what's going on, what are you doing, et cetera, et cetera, and it makes life easier and better for the borough if the redevelopment plan, you know, has, uh, some sort of component in this, so that Jack can point to his special master saying, look, we're trying. Um, so we thought that that was, and, uh, there were a, a few points with respect to affordable housing that we thought were worth adding to a redevelopment plan, should you consider one. Um, parking was another issue. Um, we had, I think, in the, the planning, um, the, the plan, redevelopment plan, as an oversight, did not include, uh, specific language to replace all of your current retail parking spaces on a one-for-one basis. It focused on the parking requirements on the residential side, but not on those, I think it's thirty-four, uh, spaces that are designated in your ordinance, um, essentially as, uh, retail. And we thought it was important, uh, to make sure that the plan.
Oh, you're missing commuter.
Uh, commuter was also addressed, I'm sorry. Residential was addressed and commuter, um, but, uh, the retail was not, and that was not by design, but it was important, and, and we thought that that's something that should be included. Um, the plan with respect to NJ Transit essentially pounced at NJ Transit, right, which is, you tell us what you need in terms of spaces. Transit is going to want whatever they want, and, and nobody's going to sit there and tell Tran, tell Transit that they don't get whatever number of spaces, uh, they want. Um, but on the retail side, it was an oversight, and it was important to, to include that. And there was also a good comment about making sure that those spaces are included at the street level, right, versus at a, to the extent that there is a multi-level parking project built into this project, whatever that, however that ultimate was designed, that you're not making those spaces sort of three stories up, and, you know, they were surface spaces, they should remain basically surface spaces. Um, so we thought those were, you know, important points that the planning board pointed out, and should be modified in a plan, if a plan moves forward. And then there was a comment about screening rooftop mechanical equipment, for example, which is often included in the plan and was not. And again, something that, um, if a plan were to move forward, I think the plan should be amended at this point in time to actually, you know, include that. So, with that, it's sort of a very, very basic overview, and again, I know you have the, uh, the planning board, um, report, the amended report in front of you. Um, from a legal perspective, um, I want to sort of outline what, you know, your next steps are. Um, you can obviously do nothing. Um, you know, the planning board has sent back a report, which they were required to do, they did identify inconsistencies, they did not make recommendations with respect to those inconsistencies. They also included, it's important to note, they also included, uh, several comments from the public that were not necessarily master plan specific, but were raised by the members of the public over the two hearings, and, uh, the planning board thought that it was important that this governing body had the benefit of, um, the testimony from some of the speakers, and so that is also included. Um, I would probably qualify that as other than any other matters that the planning board, you know, wants you to know about. I think they did a great job of outlining several items that the public had brought about, that they thought were important for the, um, for, for this governing body to, you know, to, to take note of. I think it also, the planning board report, quite frankly, is a, is a great blueprint, I think, for a potential developer to say, these are all the things that are really critically important to all of us in this community, and if you're going to be successful here, you better pay attention to this and, and, you know, take, take, uh, these things into consideration when you're, you know, designing a project. Again, if you choose another option, which is to move ahead with a redevelopment plan. The law requires the planning board to make findings and recommendations. They have made findings, not recommendations, um, and at that point, the planning, the, um, municipality, the borough, is permitted, authorized, there's a specific section of the statute that says, um, even if the redevelopment plan is inconsistent with the master plan, you can move forward with a redevelopment plan if you think it is in, you know, the best interest of the municipality, and you can state those reasons. And so, from the planning, uh, from your planner's perspective, I mean, he didn't be here tonight, but I think there were three or four items that, um, where he views the redevelopment plan as consistent with the master plan, sort of glass half-empty, glass half-full, um, and wanted, for example, these could be reasons that you would determine that you want to move forward with a, um, with a redevelopment plan, either as is or as amended based on, um, how we've discussed. Um, and sort of ironically, a lot of these are literally the exact same master plan provisions that the redevelopment, that the planning board used, where they thought the plan was inconsistent with the master plan, these provisions of the master plan. The planner has said, we think these are consistent with the master plan and provide benefits to the township. So, um, the biggest one is enhancement of the downtown, right? Um, that is a goal of the master plan, one of the primary planning concerns facing, uh, the borough. And not only providing what the planner calls aesthetic improvements, um, there's a, the plan would provide a residential base in the downtown that creates more activity, it creates more spending power, and it serves as a catalytic project for future investment in the downtown. Um, so that's one area where the planner felt that this is wholly consistent with the master plan, um, to create a pedestrian-friendly atmosphere in the downtown. Surface parking is considered, uh, a, the least desirable land use from a pedestrian perspective. Um, and so, replacing that with residential uses and creating a, a, a pedestrian walkway along Mine Brook Road is an enhancement to the pedestrian experience, not a detriment to the pedestrian experience. Uh, to enhance the characteristics of the downtown through the facade design and architecture improvements, um, which again, I know was a concern of the planning board for sure, uh, and streetscape improvements, um, through the development of new buildings with architecture that is required to be, and ultimately you and the planning board would approve, uh, consistent with the existing, um, uh, feel and look of downtown Burnsville, um, and the creation of an entrance court in front of a, in front of the train station that would enhance sort of the visual lead into the train station, um, and to also, um, uh, create an overall enhancement through redevelopment of the Mine Brook Road, um, pedestrian, uh, streetscape there. But all of that would be accomplished through redevelopment, uh, of that area. Um, and finally, um, you know, the master plan acknowledges that the, the gateway role of the train station in redeveloping, um, downtown, and, uh, it also recognizes the detrimental impact of surface parking, uh, on downtown. So, I think from the planner's perspective, you know, it's a, a better use of land than using it as surface parking for, you know, business, for, uh, revenue generation in the downtown, for investment in the downtown, and for the, you know, pedestrians, as well as for the architectural enhancement, um, of the downtown. So, there are some examples from your planner of ways in which the redevelopment plan is consistent with the master plan and, um, and, uh, you know, achieve some of the objectives of the master plan. Certainly, any one redevelopment project is never going to satisfy all of the objectives of all of somebody's master plan unless you are, you know, tearing down the entire town, which obviously doesn't happen. So, um, should you decide to move forward with a form of redevelopment plan, either as is or as suggested, uh, to be amended by some of the provisions I raised tonight, um, that were brought up as excellent points by the planning board, uh, that would require at least two more meetings of this governing body. Your redevelopment plan is introduced and finally adopted by ordinance, so meetings nine and ten, if you will, in our sort of redevelopment process here. Um, that ordinance, like any other ordinance, would require, uh, a public hearing, obviously, at the second meeting. And then, once you, once you have that redevelopment plan in place, then you can consider, uh, you know, developers and start the dialogue of, to fine-tune and detail, um, a project or type of projects that you really want to consider at that point. And again, all of that is memorialized in a redevelopment agreement, which needs to be approved at another meeting, meeting at least eleven, uh, in the process, uh, by resolution. Uh, and again, uh, one of the things I prefer to do as a practice is have the redevelopment agreement essentially have the site plan as included as the project, so that you have the controls over the final project that's being built. So, concerns, absolutely valid concerns today about, we don't know what it will look like tomorrow, are controlled by you and by the planning board when you put in the redevelopment agreement. This is exactly what you will build, right, as a, as a site plan approval, here it is. And any changes to that obviously have to come back as an amendment to the redevelopment agreement. So, those controls are always important, and, uh, they would be included in the redevelopment, uh, agreement. So, um, at this point, that's essentially, uh, that's where we are, where we've been, uh, where you can go, should you choose to, and how you would, uh, get there.
All right.
Thanks, Matt.
The, as, obviously, we don't know what our co-obligations are going to be. Do we have any risk that by having this defined redevelopment zone, a particular developer is going to press, uh, to put COA housing in, kind of like what Baskin Ridge is dealing with now, with the, I, I mean, obviously, in that situation, the, the building is owned, the, the land is owned by the developer already, uh, but, you know, where they've, in litigation with the towns, town obviously doesn't want the.
Dewey metal?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Town's not, you know, not looking for additional COA housing there, and the developer is saying, yeah, that's what we have to put in. Um, we don't want anything similar that, any, any risk of that happening mid-project, or?
I'm, I'm not following.
I want to make sure we don't.
I mean, we know we're gonna, we have a COA commitment that is probably going to be greater than the whole size of that thing.
Agreed.
I think this project's going to be too small for the developer to be looking for. I'd rather discuss it in a closed session.
Right.
But I don't, I don't think, you know, that's a larger area to do that, uh, to the, uh, to the main beat.
Yeah.
Frankly, out of business, um, and I guess they don't have any new supermarkets to ongoing there. So, that's a whole different situation. And they, I think they filed suit even before the Supreme Court came down with their, their decision last year, so that's been ongoing.
Right, they did.
Now, there was a being on the litigation, so, uh, our situation's different, but I would like to discuss it in our oral agreement, Matt, close there.
Yeah, and, and my view would be, you know, without getting sort of too far ahead of ourselves, my view would be the challenge will be to get the developer to agree to build as much COA as the borough will want, not that they will want to build so much more.
Right, I, I'm assuming that that's not.
That, I think it's going to be where.
Right, in the developer's best interest, based on a project like this. I just want to make sure that, you know.
I, I agree with Matt. He, he, the developer, I'm sure, would prefer to have no, towards why I'm in the part.
Okay. And John, from a sewer capacity, um, obviously, you know, we, we already have a project on, um, on Mill Street, there's one or two other projects that potentially may be proposed in, you know, but obviously have to tie in. Where are we with capacity and, and what's going to happen?
The capacity's not a, it's not a straightforward answer. We don't have a set, this is our number, um, mostly because of all the infiltration and inflow that we have. It's been drier than dry, we've got the lowest flows we've had in five years. Five years ago, we had the DDP knocking on our door, wanting to slap us with the capacity assurance program, because we were eighty percent of our design capacity. It really depends on the size of the project.
May I add a question? How about the Quimby Lane, um, project, that, that site, that was part of the redevelopment? Was there any discussions about that site?
Uh, there were. There were discussions about that site, um, largely in connection with, you know, the pedestrian nature, um, uh, and the use of that site. I think likely any use of that site in connection with redevelopment will be, um, for parking, right, to provide additional parking in the downtown, whether there's an ability to, you know, um, restrike or, you know, modify, that, that, that lot is in, I think, two grades, or the lot next door is in different grades, and there's opportunities maybe to, to creatively create additional parking.
We got, oh, next place?
No, 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 but my understanding is that, is that lot in and of itself flat, or that there's a, there's a.
There's a wall.
Right, okay, right. So, so through that, you know, maybe figure out a way to sort of creatively increase, uh, parking there. But I think any use of that site, realistically speaking, would be to try and increase the amount of parking available in the downtown. But not as a, um, a, a, a lot that would be converted into a, you know, residential or retail use. Again, I'm sort of.
It was covered in the plan. It was not covered.
That's, you're correct. That's correct. That was, that was, that escaped, that wasn't covered in the plan. But, but it came up later.
No, it was discussed, it was discussed in a report.
Yes, in a report, yes.
It was discussed in the planning board report, you know, in several different, uh, these other sections. I thought that's what you were referring to.
Anyone else? All right, Matt, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you.
Planning board, thank you for your long meetings and everything, and all your thought process. Um, as, um, Matt said, it's up to the governing body, um, certainly no decision made tonight, um, it wouldn't be fair, the public would have to be notified, so if they decide, if the governing body decides to move forward, of course, they'll be on an agenda, and I'll notify the Burnis, I'll notify the Burnis.
You should have invited some of that testimony, that, that would just get false testimony started.
Okay, all right, whatever, whatever you, whatever you feel, you know.
At a public hearing.
At a public hearing, I want to make sure public's back from vacation. I had a few people call me, said I'm on vacation, I can't attend the meeting this evening. I indicated to them that, you know, we will not make any decisions tonight, it'll be, if there's, if there's any future action on this, if there's any future action, it'll be at a public hearing in front of the full council and full borough. All right, yes, Melissa?
So, can I understand that what you're saying?
Do you stick up to the mic?
Yeah, come on, be, yes, yeah. This really isn't a public hearing, so I really don't want to open up too much of the public, because it's not fair for those, but you.
My question is just based on what you said, so I understand it. Planning's most provost, I would charge, for the, for the.
Yes.
Um, so, if the council decides to move forward on this plan, then there will be a public hearing, or there'll be a public hearing to decide whether or not the council moves forward with the plan?
No, the council, at this point, and, um, you came in late, but, um, Mr. Jessup explained, we could do nothing at this point if the council decides to move forward, and correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, I don't want to speak in, you know, your terms, but, um, if we decide to move forward, then there will be an introduction to a public hearing on this.
Okay.
Okay? And that's where we're at.
So, we're, the, right now, we're not afforded the opportunity even to let you know whether or not, like, what our view is on moving forward?
What I want to do is.
Because then it must kind of add to that.
Yeah, it's basically, this is, this is only a presentation right now, um, from basically our, um, redevelopment council, um, went to the planning board, they had the public hearings, they had very good meetings, very energetic meetings.
Yes.
Um, and, um, did a great job, um, controlling.
Why don't we wait?
So, um, yeah, if we decide to move forward, because what you say tonight might not matter anyway, you know?
Right. But you decide to move forward, then say, nothing I have to say will matter.
Then, then you can say, yes. Oh, sure, of course.
Right.
Yes.
And I'm sure that there are plenty of people that.
I'm sure that.
Have an opinion about.
We might have to change the venue.
You've been on people, you know.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that people that do have an opinion on it get to be heard.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Kevin, technically, there is another open session.
Yes, and there's another open session this evening, as Mr. Youngblood said, so during the open session, if you would like to say anything, it's an open session. All right?
The clock is ticking.
Thanks. All right, anybody else? Okay, request for use of the pool by the fire company annual picnic. It's an annual picnic, we do it every year.
Every year?
I think we're all in favor.
Okay. Jeff, you okay? All right, all in favor? All right, um.
That's the usual, yes.
Yes. Um, Chief, you had a recommendation for the next one, request for the use of fifteen parking spaces by Burnis High School students.
Right, just hold it until.
Want to hold that off?
Has anybody discussed this still, I don't know?
No.
First time it's been on our, so.
Do you want to push it till after?
Yeah, I think, I think we need to include Doug Walker, who worked in the library on some parking plans.
Doug shuffled some spots around here recently, so, yeah.
I think we should make it part of the overall session, the library parking lot.
Does it impact the school in any way in terms of, do they need an answer prior to schools starting in the fall? Or is this more of a spring kind of...
I didn't, I didn't see the request, this happens every year. It's more of a spring issue than it's a fall issue, we have a lot more drivers, a lot more cars in springtime than the fall. I don't think he's pressing for the fall. Just to recap, you're talking about the fifteen spaces, I believe we're gonna keep that last one back. That is right now are underutilized, however, with the shuffle that's going on right now, those spaces may not be as underutilized, so I think we're gonna wanna consider the repercussions.
Let's just make sure we, we put it on the September meeting. In, in the event that the school is looking for a quick answer, we can at least tell them what's going on.
Well, I think you can give him the agreement by motion that night pending amendment to the ordinance. You've done it, the pass. The discussion's gone on.
What is different with this request that they sent you, as you know, is they're offering pay for this.
Right.
Right, 'cause they're collecting money from the students, so they are saying for the money that we're collecting, we will pass that on to you, good enough, but...
Those are September spots. Then those are September spots. If they're paid, that means they're seniors, which is an all-year...
No, 'cause juniors, if they wanna pay, you know, parents, even if their kids, juniors can't drive to school yet, they will buy parking spots so that when their kids do turn seventeen, they can buy...
If they pay for the year, we're stuck for the year, so I think the chief's recommendation is the best, and we sit down and look at this further.
Yeah, we may not have the fifteenth, I mean, we think they're gonna be available, but if they're not available, because we have...
The configuration, you know. There's an annual, there's an annual permit, and people can buy a parking permit for that lot now, so there's nothing stopping high school parents or students from buying permits to park in the library lot. There's some kind of a permit that was signed.
Is there a, is there a employee, or do we just get that?
All right, we, obviously, we need Doug's...
Terry, do you have something to add?
I, I would just like to ask, we're going to discuss this in the Public Safety Committee, but maybe you ask our library director to join you for that discussion? Thank you.
Okay. All right, anyone else? All right, correspondence, we have a sample resolution from the Township of Warren supporting a blue line. We got a chance to look at it.
If you're interested in that, I'll have it ready here next meeting.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I think it's perfect.
Anybody have a problem with it? Okay, Shannon, I think we'll have our next meeting. All right, this point, I mean, I'll open a second open session.
Hold on, just on, wait one second, just on correspondence, I have put on everybody's, a, this is a invitation. We are, Burnetville is a member of the Somerset County Business Partnership, and they are having an event next Thursday, the eighteenth, at the Bernard's Inn, so you all have an invitation here. They've asked Kevin to speak a little bit, so if anybody's interested.
This guy.
This Kevin.
We got two Kevin.
Well, both Kevins can speak, Kevin, you wanna talk?
No. Yeah, we're members, yeah.
And then we have the planning board meeting after.
Okay.
Right.
The partnership waiver that I put on the table, if you're willing to entertain that this evening, it would be option number three in the letter of what you generally do, because that's going to be purpose property.
Can we have two minutes, Terry?
Yes, please. I wouldn't have cared if it went here, except that, um, Haas is looking for an address within thirty days, and your next meeting is outside of that twenty-three.
We always get these things, yeah?
Yes, yes, okay.
Who can we send four or five of the patients maybe for? When they can find a qualified fire, qualified, within negotiations.
Right.
Allows selling itself if somebody is not qualified, if the deed restriction remains in the property, like...
And Haas actually grants the waiver, just pursuant to that, kind of three in the letter, if you...
Right, 'cause I don't think we're buying the unit.
No.
We'd have to sell a lot more parking passes.
The hard thing I have is we're, you know, we're now, we're potentially being asked to give up an affordable housing unit of some sort or other, as we're being told by...
It, it does not subtract from our current number.
'Cause it stays on a deed, right?
It stays, it has a qualified affordable housing unit for color purposes, not more...
I wish that was...
And the person has to be qualified under all their obligations.
Even though it's been waived.
Right, it's out of the color rules of nature, you know, that's why Haas got the place like that, that they proceed pursuant to the regulation.
And when... I'll stick, I have a topic, we'll talk about it in the close, in terms of the negotiations with the...
All right, so we'll carry that further, COA discussion.
Carry this?
Yeah.
No, 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 I, I...
Do you have something you wanna...
No, I would say, let's, we've, we've done, as Jack said, we've done four or five, I think we, uh, granted the...
And if you don't respond within thirty days, they're gonna grant the waiver, right?
Okay.
I, I think we give them permission for the waiver.
Jeff? Jeff, Chris?
Yeah, I guess so.
Shannon?
I guess I have to finish reading this as well.
Now, Jack, my question was that, you know, when we are in negotiations with the master, you know, is this something that we can point to the fact that, you know, we can't even attract people to take advantage of the units that we have, or is that kind of a moot point?
It's a logical argument.
Point taken.
But that's it. All right, so in favor, granted a waiver? Not a problem, all right. Okay. All right, this point, I mean, I'll open a second open session, Melissa, would you like to speak? Come on up.
Start, Bob.
This is Provost Rob Rose, Burnetville. I wanted to talk about the redevelopment plan, as you move forward and consider it. I don't think that it's consistent with the master plan, I don't think it's consistent with what Burnetville is and what it should be. I think there are ways to improve the downtown that do not include building two large residential apartment complexes with parking. One of the things that people have been thinking about, I don't know, for like seventy years, according to Charlie over the paper, is parking downtown and adding a hundred residential units, or up to a hundred residential units with however many residents that would bring with it. I don't see how that's going to improve the current situation downtown. I don't, I, obviously, it'll add to the activity, that's true, it's gonna add to the traffic. If you were gonna add a hundred units, housing units to the downtown, we are never gonna be able to make it through downtown. I can barely make it through it as is. The other day, I was stuck in traffic on Manor Road at lunchtime past South Street. It's impossible to get through town now, adding that many more residents would make it all worse. There's no consideration given to the strain with resources due to the increased number of residents that these housing units would bring, the police, utilities, schools. There's clearly nothing planned from the affordable housing requirements that'll bring. Part of it is based on the Gateway Project as rationale for us meeting this. The Gateway Project, at its best, best, most hopeful estimates, is twenty years away. There is nothing in any of the documentation for the Gateway Plan or the Gateway Project that says that it will improve or bring a direct line from Burnetville to Manhattan. It's likely not to do that, even with the increase of the tunnel. And so, we are building this, we're gonna irrevocably change Burnetville for a plan that may never even come to fruition, and at its best is at least twenty years away. There's been absolutely no examination of what the borough of Burnetville needs or wants in connection with what our town should look like, what it should be, and how we want it to change, if we want it to change. There are better ways to address the problems downtown aside from just adding people, thinking that they're gonna shop at places that nobody wants to shop at now, like the Athens. Adding, you know, hundreds more people to downtown isn't gonna improve that. Just, there's a saying that I, I always like to rely upon, don't hold on to a mistake just because you spent a lot of time making it. Don't hold on to this one because we spent a lot of money investing and checking it out. I think it's time to cut bait on this one and not spend any more money.
Thank you, thanks. Anyone else, Bob?
Bob Graham. Waiting for a gosh, you're very good. I'll try to be delicate, 'cause I am the chairman of the planning board, awesome, so. The one thing is, I would encourage you, and you know you get a lot of paperwork, please take the time to read the entire response from the planning board, please talk to Peter when you get a chance, as the representative of the planning board. The overarching intent from the planning board was that this plan is not complying with the master plan and cannot be fixed, cannot be adapted to become compliant. That's, that's what the planning board wanted to communicate, too. Separately from that, which isn't in the, I don't think is in the report, there are other areas that are much better to be redeveloped than this proposed one. So, if you really wanna look at, I believe in the concept of redeveloping down by the Burnetville there. There are other areas to do, not that it can't be condemned or required, but there are better capabilities, better opportunities than this one. You'll see when you read the report, you'll have an inkling of the public response. So, we tried to do some of the, the state work, you know, upfront, collect and condense objections and considerations. I disagree with the testimony from your plan, from your representative on the town planer. Their observations, like some of that information's misguided, false. Specifically, the facades, it's not gonna look anything like anything that's in Burnetville, or it's got its own unique architectural style. One could argue elegant style, but nonetheless, it's not consistent with Burnetville. I don't wanna get too much, I, we tried to communicate as much as we could in the report, please just, just read it. And it's a high-profile concern to the citizens, and there are alternatives that would be pretty good results for Burnetville.
Thank you, Bill.
I thought I would like to thank you, that report was very clear.
Thank you, yes.
You guys obviously showed a mind, Terry and Melissa, playing...
Well, it's important.
It is very important.
And it was a good opportunity to lay off some of the testimony and so forth, and deal with it in a, in an amicable way, you know, and I think people, you know, people are genuinely concerned with trying to communicate the positive ideas and alternatives.
No, we appreciate all the time you spent on this, thank you. Anyone else? Janine?
Hello, Janine Sullivan, twenty-five Stevens Street, Burnetville. Five small points. One that seems to just keep me in this is Quimby, parking there by the post office, and I know it was mentioned briefly, but there was no mention in the report, and nor was it talked about in the plan. But that should be done maybe even separately, because I think something can be done there that would help with parking without having to be held up by whatever brand plants there might be for market development, because I was thinking that as you come past the post office, you could enter the lower level of parking just as it is now. But you could also have coming up Mill Street, a second level going in sideways, that's up higher, that's equal to the parking, that's the other lot. So, you would in effect be able to put up two levels rather easily, and I'm sure someone could create a really nice facade, so it's not ugly-looking parking, but looks really pretty. So, I would think that Quimby could be looked at more quickly for parking.
And who's gonna pay for that?
I don't know, the developer, I don't know if you would do paid parking at, at that point, that you would have some paid parking, I mean, I, I don't know how the residents feel, because I, I do agree with Melissa, I don't think anyone's been serving. But I don't know if they get the benefits of paid parking in that area, and then, again, I don't know. I don't know if residents will or won't, I don't know, I only hear that there's a complaint about parking mostly here, but if there is, that might be something you wanna look at separately from developing the housing. In terms of housing, I think that waiting to see what happens with Mill Street's really important to our community, that'd be the first housing of that, of building of that size in our neighborhood. And I think it's going to take a lot for people to even adjust to that, I believe it's four stories, when it's all said and done. I don't even believe our fire department has a ladder that reaches four stories, I believe they only can reach three. So, you're already putting a strain on a fire department that isn't equipped to handle a four-story without calling in a ladder truck from another location. So, maybe waiting to see that, how that feels, how that adds the traffic to that corner, to those areas, would be a good way to evaluate the increase in traffic before you put Burnetville on the belt down with training stations. And then, I think that you just hit nail on the head, have at alternative locations. So, maybe look at areas for redevelopment that aren't the train station. I know that's because we own that land, so that, of course, makes it the easiest place and the first thing we think of, but maybe there are areas that we could purchase from other locations that a developer, obviously, would pick up the cost and depart that development plan, but, and I know it's a long shot, because the quarry is owned by a private company condo complex, but maybe something back in the quarry that, you know, would be a complex with the lake, like they're doing over in Millington or something. I don't know, just alternatives, and again, maybe asking the community what those alternatives might be, that they're acceptable to them. Thank you.
Thanks, Janine, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Grant McMon, one fifteen Washington Corner, right side, commanding, chairman, Graham's. Managing of a challenging planning board meeting, and the whole committee did a wonderful job listening to us, because it is a passionate subject for us. Two points I'll raise, I'll save my real passionate speech when we get to that point. I think we're all passionate about it for the right reasons, so, just two points. One is really what's the historical narrative that the town wants to leave for the next twenty to thirty years out of this process? I don't believe that that redevelopment plan aligns to our highest objectives, and so we have to think about what, what does that mean? Something around innovation and thoughtfulness and forward thinking, there's something around that, and I think we can be more thoughtful on how we get innovative ideas from different places and from different actors that I don't know that were doing the best job on that as of yet, because what I saw, I think what we all saw in redevelopment plan, sort of critical approach, in a very difficult space. The only other point that I, I just shared fundamentally is that we, we have a town that wants to engage, and if we can develop a process beyond what we're doing here because of the constraints, and I don't know how we do that, other than reaching out and understanding their voices and getting them to be more engaged, and I think it's all incumbent on us to figure out how to do that, to hear their thoughts and their perspective on what a plan might look like. I think we're just sort of being served, or being served, because it's a requirement of, of the council to do so. So, just thank you all for listening to us and look forward to engaging in this process for...
No, thank you. Anyone else? Chris?
Christine Zamanna, twenty-eight Anderson Hill. I know that we missed, or I missed the talk about my street light.
Yes.
So, I just wanna add that it is very dark there at night walking, so the reason I requested the light is because I think it's dangerous. The homes that are there in that area, twenty-two Anderson, I believe, is a rental, and they already have light in front of their house. Twenty-four Anderson is a foreclosure and has been vacant for over a year. And twenty-six Anderson is a rental, the owners live in California, so, as far as I know, they're unreachable by me, so maybe you, you guys have a better way of reaching them, but I can't. And then, across the street is nineteen Anderson, which is also vacant, and that was recently sold to a developer who's gonna make three houses there. So, in an ideal, perfect world, he sells all three houses, and the foreclosure, you know, sells, maybe. Then, I think the lighting might increase, but in the meantime, there's plenty of high school and middle schoolers walking around at night and trying to ride bikes and stuff. Not like in total darkness, but it's, it's just very dark there. So, the only thing I ask is that you take a walk, because driving is different, driving is headlights. So, when you're walking and someone drives up, you're, you're pretty much blinded.
Well, we discussed, um, this evening, and the chief involved, to increase the wattage of the light bulbs that are in there. Rob Walton from JCPN was here earlier, he didn't engage in conversation of the street outage, but there has been contact with PSTNG, and they've agreed to increase the wattage, see how that works out. And then, if we have to go further, if we have to add another light on a pole somewhere, and, and, you know, that's where we're at.
So, I think, even though it's not directly related to the downtown development, but a lot of the reason why people don't go downtown is for safety, it's not really that safe to walk. So, walking down, you might wanna revisit, I'm sure I'm not the only one who has the opinion that it's too dark, or that it's kind of desolate, walking, not totally desolate, but just, I just say, do the walk and make your own decision.
I disagree with you, I, I, you know, there might be one area where you need a light, which we're addressing now.
Right.
But let's just start there and then move forward.
No, I agree with that.
Do you wanna light up the town like a city?
Well, I mean, it's safety, it's not because I want to see Broadway lights.
I don't see a problem with letting go.
Then we disagree, thanks.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Terry?
I do have something, but I would like to say, Harry Thompson, 79, I know, first of all, I don't think you, you have, since, I think a couple of you were there for part of those planning board meetings, Bob Graham did an absolutely spectacularly good job of respecting and summarizing, not only respecting, but summarizing everyone who's, who offered testimony and getting it into our report, and I think he deserves a lot of praise. And the other thing that's buried in there is something that the board is going to look at again, that he suggested seven years ago, nine years ago, all time, and, and it would work, he has a very terrific idea to improve our downtown traffic circulation, we have looked at it, I know Kevin looked at it with us a couple, oh, as I say, eight or nine years ago, but you've probably forgotten, and it came to nothing, then, because, you know, somebody's going to have to go back, go do battle with the DEP if we're ever, the DE, DOT, if we're ever going to get there, but, as part of all of this downtown, I want you to look at that section of our report again, and, and think about that as a way to maybe make some of the traffic problems that everyone sees less troublesome.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else?
I'll talk to you about something.
Okay, I'll probably see you in sharp right over the weekend. That's like the meeting spot. All right, seeing no one else, I'm going to close the, close the open session, entertaining motion, move into closed session, to discuss qualified topics, collective bargaining, consent negotiations, personnel matters, pending access litigation, property acquisition, attorney-client privilege, and contract negotiations, police department study, contract negotiations, total loan care contract, and a personnel matter.
Jack, do you think we come out?
We may.
Okay.
Remember?
All right, so we may, we may come out, I know we're not that an exciting crowd here, so you might want to, or you might not want to, but Bob, thank you again, and entertaining motion, brought by Mr. Youngblood, second by Mr. Schmidt, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. You're not giving me that call, I'm probably, I know, he's trying to give us some...
So, you were talking to Kerwin before, on something else, Mike, you said?
Yeah, he just calls me sporadically.
All right, so he said, technically, the Baskin Ridge Business Alliance is co-sponsoring the event with the, so, they're going to ask me to say something as president?
No, no.
So, they're, they're going to ask me to talk, I'm just going to, on BRBA, but I told Mike I would talk to you, you know, just a couple of minutes?
Yeah, just a minute or so, thank, thank you, this, this, what's going on in the town, you know? We're really working hard in Burnersville, we're looking at redevelopment, it's a touchy issue, we're not kind of way through it, we're not through it, whatever, we're in the end zone, we may be all thrown into...